Okay. I will call the meeting, I will call the meeting to order, the Everman City Council, regular meeting. It is Tuesday, October the 8th, 2024, and the time is 6 o'clock. If everybody please rise for a moment to signify by political allegiance. Okay, so first item of agenda is citizens' comments.
Michael Barbera, Barbara, sorry.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, valued staff, and most importantly, to the citizens of this great city, Everman. I am Michael Barber. I am the Republican nominee to be the next county commissioner in Precinct One, your commissioner. You might remember me as sitting in the majority of your meetings for the past five years, listening to your citizens, hearing their hurts, hearing their desires, hearing their suggestions. But I'm also on a listen and learn tour. I'm learning you. I'm learning the city manager, your way of communicating at your meetings and with your citizens. But make no mistake, Everman is not the only city I do this with. For the better part of five years, I've been attending Benbrook, Burleson, Crowley, Edge Cliff Village, Forest Hill, Fort Worth, and the county commissioners' meetings, every week, every month, for the past five years. What I have noticed in these past five years is that there's not a county commissioner at any of your meetings, or any of these other meetings that I've attended, nor anybody from their staff, nor my opponent, which makes me scratch my head and wonder, where do they listen to the citizens? How do they know where they're hurting? This is the town square. This is the public forum. And unless you're just waiting for a phone call at your office, which in my opinion is flawed and failed policies, you don't know what your citizens need. We have a representative form of government, and I think it's been missing and lacking for some time. You see me, I'm in your community. I live just down the road. I'm in your community every single day. I have lived in this precinct all of my 62 years. I am invested in your community. Having served the Fort Worth Police Department for over three decades, it's taught me some valuable lessons, some of which are to be a good listener, to ask the hard questions, to be a problem solver, and to take the totality of the information before making decisions that might have unintended consequences. It is my intention, unless there is something that prohibits me, as your next county commissioner, there will be a staff person at every one of your city council meetings, to listen, to be a resource, to be a part of the conversation from start to end, to be a good partner with Everman. Since the Star Telegram Voters Guide came out yesterday, I'd like to leave you with this. There is a difference between a professional and a community activist. So I vow to you and to every citizen in Everman and this part of Tarrant County that I will fight every attempt to turn Tarrant County into a sanctuary county. I will fight every attempt to defund our police, to decarcerate, and to decriminalize. That is my promise to you and to these citizens. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you. I look forward to seeing each of you at the polling locations on November 5th. I am all the way down the ballot at number 33, so please do not tire out. And most importantly, I look forward to working with you starting January 1st as your next county commissioner. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Okay, next item, uh, was it, anybody else, Mary? Uh, Mindy. My mind ain't working. Been a long day. Okay, so Item A, Public Hearing, Public Hearing to Receive Sworn Testimony and Citizens' Comments Concerning a Proposed Ordinance Amending the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance of the City of Everman as Previously Amended at Article III Administration, Section 3.2, Board of Adjustments by Amending Section 3.2.2 Members' Terms of Office. This ordinance would essentially appoint the City of Everman Planning and Zoning Commission to serve as the Board of Adjustments. Oh, that's right. Okay. So, the time is 6:06. Start our public hearing.
So, before you entertain any citizen comments on this, just want to remind council, we briefly discussed this last council meeting, essentially this would appoint the Planning and Zoning Commission as to serve as the Board of Adjustments, which would hear all variances. We do have a pending variance request right now, so if this approves tonight, we would actually move forward with that as soon as next week. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing last night in their meeting. Four of the five members were in attendance. Those, all four members voted to recommend adoption of this ordinance to you, so it passed planning and zoning last night. There were no comments from the public regarding it. And that's all there is for that. So, if you want to entertain any citizen comments, then we can move forward from there.
So, I'll entertain any citizen's comments. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:07. Next item, Discussion Items, Item A, Receive Report and Discuss the Four-Day Schedule for City Hall and Other Departments.
Okay, so it has been three months, if you can believe, since we implemented the four-day work schedule. We did this on a trial basis. I did share with you, we conducted employee survey, an internal employee survey for the employees that's affected, and I do want to share the results with you, if you haven't had a chance to review it. But 84% of employees have reported that they have improved work-life balance with a four-day work week. My computer's jumping on me for some reason. 100% of them say that they prefer the four-day versus five-day work week, another 100% say that they can still meet citizens' needs, working one less day per week. 20% have said that they would probably be very likely to leave our department, our city, should we choose to go back to a five-day work week. 80% have reported having reduced stress, and 76% have reported having an increased productivity. At the bottom of that report, I shared several comments that were shared from the employees and staff, so I can share with you from the staff side of this. This has been very well received, very appreciated. It has certainly significantly improved morale, I think, within the workplace. It's improved productivity as far as public works, and they've got measures that they have implemented because they're spent up time in the morning and in the evenings. Now they're able to address more issues all at once. So we've seen a lot of progress internal. External, we have not had any formal complaints. I have not had any citizens reach out to me directly to request to speak to this. I don't know if you've had any engagements with any. I have heard a couple of grumbles, for lack of a better phrase, on just some folks that have said that they wish we were open on Friday. But we have had several people that have expressed their gratitude and appreciation for being open earlier and open later, because now they're able to get up here and get what they need done. Particularly as it relates to cutoffs, one of the things that we didn't think about when we were proposing this was when cutoff day hits, we close at 5:00. If we have a citizen who, for whatever reason, something happened, they failed to pay their bill, they get off work at 5:00, they get home at 5:30 and realize their water's cut off, they have no options until the next business day where they gotta come in to take a day off work and come in and take care of it. With us now being open to 6:00, we've had a lot, we've had flows right after cutoff day where between 5:30 and 6:00, we've got a line at the door of people saying, hey, hey, wait, wait, let me take care of you. And we've been able to satisfy the needs of those customers. So, I think overall, my assessment is, I think it's been a great move for our city. I think it's been great in the aspect of it's, we're able to offer something else to our employees that doesn't have a negative budget impact. One of the other things I wanted to share with you, and if it allows you, you don't mind sharing my presentation, one of the proposed arguments and things that we researched was electrical usage, that we anticipated to see a reduction in energy consumption with this change. And I can tell you that, yes, we have seen a reduction, but we did two things at the same time. We transferred to a four-day work week. At the same time, we also transferred all of our devices to being smart, programmable devices. So I can't tell you how much of this is due to a four-day work week versus how much is due to a smart thermostat. But we have seen some pretty dramatic reductions within our energy, the green being this year, the blue being last, and the gray being the year prior. So we are seeing smarter energy use. We've seen a reduction in that over the last couple of years, and you can follow the trend lines as well to see. So, I just wanted to tell you that it wasn't a lie, but I can't tell you how much of that is due to the smart thermostat installations versus four-day work week. It's probably, if I had to guess, closer to 75% due to the smart thermostats and 25% due to operational hours, but overall, we are seeing a reduction there, which will translate not necessarily to budget savings, because energy costs go up each year, but it will reduce in savings for us overall. And I'll entertain any questions. This isn't necessarily an action item, but we don't have to take action unless you feel like we need to bring this back as an action item to go back. Our policies are already amended. We did it on a trial basis. So if you take no action tonight, then the policies will stay in place until such time that you choose to bring it back and make a policy change.
Yeah, I know. A lot of door rattling. Lot of door rattling. All right, so we'll drop down to Item B, Civic Plus Website Management Services for the City of Everman Website.
All right, so we talked about this during budget. One of our, I think, weak points is within our website. Currently, we have a website that is managed by WordPress, which means it's managed by staff. It's us that have to update and manage the website. I am not a website designer. Mindy's not a website designer. We certainly try our best to put forth a great website, but we are not professionals in accessibility and what attracts residents and ease of use. And that's been a complaint and a little bit of an issue for the last several years. So we talked about it in budget, wanting to move forward with a new website. Civic Plus is a firm that we already use today. They are a meeting management software vendor, so manages all of our agendas, meetings, minutes, everything associated with that, which actually provides a little bit of a discount on the backend by going with their website management service. Not only will they work with city staff at whatever committee we put together to work on designing a website that is very easily accessible for citizens and ease of navigation, putting forth, you know, the prominent information we want right there on the front page, making sure that we're trying to be as accessible and transparent as possible. They will also assist us with 24/7 support. If we need any information uploaded to the website, we need to provide any updates, they can take care of that for us, which is something we don't have today. If we have a website problem today, to be quite frank, it's like pulling teeth to get help to try to get it fixed. And we have had that happen a few times over the last couple of years where our website has just gone down completely, and we've got nowhere to go, and we have to try to figure it out ourselves. And I've learned a lot over the last couple of years having to do that, but it's just not, it's just not good practice. So, we, Mindy actually coordinated with Civic Plus. She did a great job of getting them to put a proposal together for us. I've included that proposal in the packet. There were a few different options. One of the options was, we could go with a template design, which is called a premium design. A template design means that they've already designed a platform for us. And essentially, they would just kind of plug in our information into that template. That template is going to look very familiar to any other cities that may use the same template. The only thing that changes is some pictures and colors, right? Not as customizable. The Ultimate Designs Platform is customizable. It's fully customizable. And so it provides a lot more flexibility as far as design. We're really able to go in there and customize a lot. And there's several examples that are included in that packet that you can go to today, such as Kenai City, Alaska, Wilson, Wilsonville, Oregon, I mean, all kinds of websites that are actually live today that you can go to. Mindy and I spent a lot of time looking at all these different websites, and we were very impressed with the ease of access and functionality of those websites. Civic Plus comes highly recommended by several other cities as well. There are other features, which in the future, I don't recommend that we explore these just yet, but in the future, we can choose to implement along with our website. Currently, our vendor for CTY System is Blackboard. Civic Plus offers a similar platform that would incorporate into the website, meaning that citizens can sign up to receive phone calls, texts, emergency notifications, all that directly through our website, which would eliminate city staff from having to take that information when somebody registers and inputting it manually. It really automates a lot, but it would incorporate into the website. One of the other features that I think is really important as we move forward and we talk a lot, you know, cybersecurity is a big, is a big threat. I can't tell you, we do our best to keep our website up to date with cybersecurity, but I'm not 100% confident that it is fully up to date. Now, does that pose a threat as far as city operations? No, it doesn't. There's no critical information that we maintain on our website, but it doesn't prohibit somebody from coming in and taking our website offline, which would significantly hinder citizens' accessibility to information and so forth. So, it's important that we improve our website security. We've also got problems where, if you recall, when we went to this new platform, for whatever reason, the vendor that we, the city selected to go to this new platform, the old domain was never fully deactivated. So we still have instances where people may click a link, and they're going to our old website from the early 2000s with dated information that just isn't accurate. And we can't, again, I'm not IT, I'm not a website designer. I can't figure out how to take that down. I've tried everything I know. We have complained about it to our current vendor, but they haven't been able to fix it either. Civic Plus has assured us they can, they can take care of that for us and clean all that up. So, we did put it into the budget for us to go with the Ultimate Designs, the fully customizable. We have planned to move forward with that. I've already signed off on agreement with them and let them know. There will be six phases of this project. It's going to take a few months to do this. And we have asked, because one of our, one of our biggest complainers about our website is actually our mayor pro tem. So I asked our mayor pro tem to help us out with this, to please sit on this committee and be a part of these discussions, because I want to make sure you're satisfied. Because I want to make sure that you're satisfied. So, if any other council members wish to participate in that, of course, we would love your feedback as a part of this. We want to make sure that you're happy with the website. Not only is the website, I think, important for us as a community when we talk about transparency and interaction with our citizens, but we're growing. We're the fastest-growing county around. I mean, we are growing tenfold. And when you talk about wanting to attract developments, one of the first things a developer looks at is the city's website. And we want to make sure that that's an attractive and accurate website. So, that's all I've got for that. Just wanted to provide that update that we're moving forward. It's probably going to take us about four to five months to get it fully implemented. And if anybody has any feedback on the website, let us know.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go down to Item C, Receive Report and Discuss Planned City Christmas Events and Activities.
All right, so we have started putting together the Facebook events and marketing on our social media. The Christmas Committee has planned and scheduled all of our Christmas events. The first one is the Holiday Market that has been scheduled for November 30th. The Holiday Market last year was great. We had really good feedback from a lot of our vendors. One of the pieces of feedback we actually got from vendors, from the vendors, was that they were shocked that we were not charging a vendor fee. We do feel it would be appropriate to charge a vendor fee this year. We have recommended, and I just kind of want to make sure it doesn't create any heartburn here at council before we market that, but looking at other vendors or other craft fairs and vendor fees, we're thinking $50 for a vendor booth with power and $40 for a vendor booth without power. We felt that that would be reasonable. It would also help to offset our costs, because again, we put these events on without any city dollars allocated directly to these events. It's solely through fundraising, so that will help offset some cost of putting these events on. The event will go from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have expanded the event a little bit this year, and I jumped out on a limb and went ahead and booked an ice skating rink that we're going to have here this year for the Holiday Market. We do have some live music scheduled and some other things, and we're going to do everything we can to meet our fundraising goal to match that. So, I'm confident that we'll make it. We will make it. So we're really excited about our Holiday Market this year. The Christmas Tree Lighting has been scheduled for, as always, the first Thursday in December, which is December the 5th, at 6:00 p.m. We have already notified the school district, and we're coordinating with them and including them in all communications. We are not expanding this event any more than what we did last year, other than adding a couple of vendors on the pathway to see Santa. You know, the line for Santa has been pretty long at times, and so we wanted to provide some sort of either entertainment or option for those people as they're waiting in line for, some of those folks waited in line for an hour and a half to see Santa. So, that's a tough line to stand in if you don't, if you don't have something. So we've got a little coffee shop that's going to be halfway on the route. We've got some entertainment that's going to help wander the lines and things. So, we're excited about that. But otherwise, it'll stick to the traditional, traditional Christmas tree lighting, just as we always have. We do anticipate to have our new stage that EDC and council approved. We do anticipate to have that constructed by Thanksgiving, which means we will have it ready and available and to use for the Christmas tree lighting this year. Not a city event, because it is a religious event, but last year, we did have a group that came in and rented our facilities for the purpose of hosting a Rosary to the Virgin. That was a really big turnout last year, and so I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that they are looking to rent our facilities again this year for that event, and that has been scheduled for December the 12th. And then we also scheduled our Christmas movie night on December the 23rd. So again, that's a totally free event for our kids. It's a Monday evening. We open up our civic center. We'll provide popcorn, and then we'll, we'll have candy and stuff that they can purchase, and we'll have, we'll have a good Christmas movie on for them to enjoy. TBD. I believe it was, I don't have the flyer for that one constructed just yet. We're, we're trying to play catch-up, so. But we're excited about the Holiday Market and the tree lighting this year. We think both those events are going to be absolutely amazing. We've had great turnouts at both, so we hope to repeat that again this year. Oh, yes, yeah, we are relocating the tree this year next to the stage. Since the stage is going to go in this corner facing the park, we're going to have the tree next to the stage. It makes sense to put it there. And that's all included within the package of the stage. They're going to build all that together. So, electrical and everything should be good.
So, is Santa going to be in here, or is it going to be?
No, Santa will be in here. Yes, yeah. Santa will be in here. It shouldn't be a problem this year. We've got a plan in place already, and we've already talked to American Barricade, and we've got a plan in place to get the kiddos back reunited with their parents. We're going to be more organized with that this year. Yep.
So, any questions or comments? Okay, next item, Item D, Discussion and First Reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 824, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Everman, Tarrant County, Texas, Granting to Encore Electrical Delivery Company, LLC, Its Successors and Assigns a Non-Exclusive Franchise to Use Public Right-of-Ways, Rights-of-Way of the City of Everman, Texas, for the purposes of construction, constructing and operating an electrical distribution and transmission system, setting forth terms and conditions to govern the franchise, providing a repealing clause, providing for a severability clause, providing for a savings clause, and provide for an effective date.
All right. So, as y'all are aware, I think we briefly talked about it, that it is time to renew our franchise agreement. And I have asked our city attorney to manage that, and she has done a phenomenal job. So, I'm going to turn it over to Victoria to talk. And then we do have Scott here from Encore to talk to you as well and answer any questions that you might have.
I'm going to try to keep it real simple, but probably most of you have not been here for adoption of an Encore franchise, because they normally only roll around about every 20 years or so. Encore, as you know, delivers the electricity within the city. The rates that Encore charges for its electricity are regulated by the PUC, the Texas Public Utility Commission. And in addition, Encore's operational aspects are overseen by ERCOT, the Electric Reliability Council of Texas. Council of Texas. So what does this franchise do, right? Well, the franchise, that's before you deny it, grants Encore the privilege of using rights-of-way within the city to, for its lines and its facilities and its equipment, so that it can provide electricity to all the people in the city. And it sets forth the fee that Encore will pay the city for that privilege. That's essentially what the franchise is. Under state law, the city's electric franchise fee that Encore pays is calculated based on the number of kilowatt-hours that Encore delivers to customers within the city's boundaries. And that number of hours is multiplied by a multiplier, which is right now 0.003357. And those are, again, set generally by the PUC in rate-making cases. The franchise term is 20 years, and that seems like a long time, but that's pretty standard. Our charter sets a limit of 20 years for us. A lot of other cities have 25 or 30, and when they have that in their charter, that's what they normally go, 25 or 30 years. I'm going to hit just a few high points of the franchise. First of all, it incorporates the city's right-of-way management ordinances, so that Encore and whatever it's doing in our right-of-ways has to abide by those ordinances. It also reserves to the city the superior right to use our own rights-of-way for public improvements and public projects. And it reserves for the city the right to change any of our public rights-of-way. With very limited exceptions, if Encore facilities are in our public rights-of-way and they have to be relocated because we exercise that superior right, Encore has to pay for that relocation. Encore has to abide by the Uniform Manual on Traffic Control Devices regarding barriers and lights that identify work areas in our public rights-of-way. They agree to provide insurance and indemnification to the city relating to liability arising from their acts or their omissions. And in addition to the franchise fee, they also agree to pay 4% of gross revenue that they receive from customers in the city for what they call discretionary service charges. And those are kind of unique charges for things like installation and equipment costs for special metering or installation of temporary facilities for construction. There's quite a few steps for the franchise to actually become effective. Our charter requires that it has to be read twice at two separate meetings before it can be adopted. And then, a brief summary of the ordinance has to be published in the newspaper. Council also, after you approve it, it becomes effective 30 days after your approval. That's per the charter. Encore then has to file an acceptance of the franchise with the city secretary, and they have to file that within 60 days. And once they agree to the franchise, and we don't anticipate any issues with their agreement, because they've already signed off on the draft you have before you, then it's not only an ordinance, but also a contract between the city and Encore. Kind of it. I'm open for questions.
Does our charter require the newspaper? Is that our charter that requires that? Newspapers are going away. So what's going to be the next logical step in that if we don't have a paper to put it in?
We will have to, we'll have to come up with an official newspaper, because, you know, we need an official newspaper for all kinds of things that we have to, have to do. It doesn't have to be the paper in the city, but it has to be something that can circulate into the city.
But it just concerns me, because the papers are going away, and it's... Yeah. You have any questions or comments for Victoria? Scott, you got anything you want to say?
Mayor, council members, city staff, Scott Bombach with Encore. Nothing specific, other than I appreciate the opportunity again. And if there's anything that comes up between now and the next reading that I need to address or run by our regulatory affairs group, just, I'm sure Craig will let me know, and we'll get you an answer for sure. And if I need to investigate the paper thing, I can...
I'm just trying to think ahead.
Yeah, no, I get it. In fact, I was sitting there thinking, you know, what do you do? Because they're kind of like landlines, you know, nobody uses them anymore either, so at some point, it'll probably go away, but...
And if it does, that's going to require us, I guess, to do the charter change, so...
Exactly. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. So our next reading will be next meeting, or?
I believe so, yes.
And then at the next meeting, we can vote on it? Or do we have to? Okay, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll drop down to consideration of possible action. Item A. Ordinance number 823. An ordinance of the city of Edelman, Texas, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Edelman, as previously amended, at Article 3, Administration, Section 3.2, Board of Adjustment, by repealing Section 3.2.2, Members' Terms of Office, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 823 as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Do you poll the council?
Place one. Place two. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item B. Resolution number 2024-10-01. A resolution of the city of Edelman, Texas, authorizing the city manager to sign an inter-local cooperative purchasing agreement with Region 8 Education Service Center for the interlocal purchasing system, TIPS program, and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution number 2024-10-01 as read.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Probably a question on what is this.
I see them at TML and everything every year, so...
So TIPS is very similar to Byboard. It's a cooperative purchasing group that allows us to go out with and acquire and procure items without having to necessarily comply with bidding processes, RFQs, RFPs. It eliminates that process for us, which ultimately saves us dollars, because it's already been negotiated on our behalf, essentially. So TIPS is very similar to Byboard. It just gives us another, another purchasing avenue.
Any questions or comments? Poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item C. Resolution number 2024-10-02. A resolution of the city council of the city of Edelman, Texas, adopting the city of Edelman covered applications and prohibited technology policy and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution number 2024-10-02 as read.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? You got anything, Craig?
State mandated TikTok policy is all this is, so...
It is, because they state mandate has to be approved by November 20th.
Okay. Any others discussion or ques?
No.
Would you poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item D. Actions concerning appointments to various boards, commissions, or committees.
All right, so on this one, Jennifer serves as our liaison for the senior citizen advisory board. She was working to schedule a meeting with the senior citizen advisory board and received a response from Mr. Danny Longoria that he has no interest, doesn't want to serve on the board, and he has yet to even show up to be sworn in. So that's been a battle, kind of back and forth, trying to get him to get up here and get sworn in with Mindy. So I'm assuming that his email response to the HR director, which was pretty short enough professional, is probably his resignation and doesn't fill that gap, so I would assume that we have a vacancy on the senior citizen advisory board. Doesn't mean you necessarily have to fill it tonight, but again, it's my duty to inform you, and if you choose to fill that tonight, you can. Otherwise, you can choose to table this, and we'll keep it on the agenda until it is filled, so up to you.
Was there anybody that signed up initially that we didn't have room for them to be on the board?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, they haven't. No, part of the problem was trying to get, Mindy was trying to get him to come up and get sworn in. Remember, if you recall, it was actually on the agenda for him to be sworn in at one of our council meetings. He was here, for whatever reason, he left before we even got to that agenda item, so he wasn't sworn in. So back and forth, finally ended up instructing Jennifer, just go ahead and schedule it. We'll try to get him sworn at the first meeting. She's been working to try to get this scheduled, and now bad response.
So if we have a board, haven't met, how long do we keep this board?
Yeah, I don't know that we want, I don't think we can go there right now. We can add that to the next agenda, but we can't, I don't know we can go there. It would just be regarding the appointments.
Have the rest of them been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the four other members of the board have been sworn in.
So technically, with four, they could still meet.
Yes, and I believe they are planning to. They've got a meeting scheduled 21st. Is that correct? Yeah, October 21st, they've got a meeting scheduled, so they are planning to move forward, but they'll be down a position.
Okay.
So do we need to take any action tonight?
That is completely up to you. If you have somebody you would like to consider to appoint, or you can move to table this, and we'll put it on the next agenda.
I move we table it and open it on the next agenda.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
There's no vote needed for a table.
Oh, that's right. Okay, everybody just kind of be on the lookout for maybe an individual that would make that fifth position, so be greatly appreciated. All right, next item, see if we don't have any executive session. City manager's report.
New year, we made it, so we're working on trying to get everything going for the new year, now that we're in the new fiscal year. And then Susan's obviously working overtime, trying to wrap up year end and get things going there. We did attend, we had several, everybody scheduled conferences and seminars over the last couple of weeks, so we've been to several. Susan and I had the pleasure of going to the sales tax workshop for, put on by the Texas Economic Development Corporation, or no, Texas Economic Development, TDC, what is, it's put on by the state. It was a really, it was a really great seminar. We got a lot of really valuable information from them, made some good connections, so that was a good seminar. We also attended the OpenGov transform. OpenGov is our financial software vendor that manages all of our budgets and capital improvements, and we got a lot of really good information from that seminar as well. So we're excited to take what we've learned at both those conferences and seminars and try to bring those, that information back and implement some improved procedures within the city. That should really help us out, so that's all I've got right now.
Okay, the next mayor's report, and really the only thing I have is...
Ice machine.
We have potentially a groundbreaking ceremony that'll be coming up in the very near future, and a couple ribbon cuttings, so be on the lookout for that, so... But with that being said, the time is 6:40, and we are adjourned.